So I'm gonna call this Finance Committee meeting. Um, I think Madam Vice President called it to my attention, who I am and what I'm doing. I thought I was Santa Claus, so it's called it the order. Roll call.
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Guerra?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Galloway?
Present.
Mr. Griggs?
Present.
Ms. Worthing?
Present.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion. Well, first, any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, I want to entertain a motion to counsel all the agenda except for the action resolutions and, and, and any new business. So other than that, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Guerra?
I made the motion.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Ms. Guerra?
Mr. Davis?
I second.
It's been moved and second to postpone all parts of the Finance Committee agenda except for the resolutions, action items, and any other new business. Any discussion? All right, that was the grand kids and all of that stuff, so.
That was Santa Claus, right?
Yeah. I say any discussion? Okay, my discussion on postponing this is because it's the holiday and I'm in the spirit, I still might vote no. All right? All in favor of postponing all of the agenda items except for the resolutions and new business signified by saying aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. But that's just not in the spirit, I don't mind. Any abstentions? That motion carries. Okay, so I would look at the resolutions. Um, I'll take them as a group. With any separations, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Guerra?
Make a motion that we approve, uh, as a property, say the master resolution or no?
Well, let's name them by number, one each one.
I make a motion that we approve 1-8-0, 6-1-8, 1-8-0.
Hold on, give it a title.
Wait, point of order.
Yes.
Shouldn't it be moved to council?
Yeah, that's what I'm moving it to.
Yes.
I thought I said to approve.
No, to move.
Oh.
To council? Okay, we getting it together?
All right, so I'm gonna restart. Make a motion to move to council, 1-8-0, 6-1-8, which is Burger Chevrolet's Tahos, 1-8-0, 6-2-0, which is contract with North Star, 1-8-0, 6-2-1, which is a contract with Mott, 1-8-0, 6-2-2, which is a contract with Flint Housing, 1-8-0, 6-2-3, which is a contract with Cornerstone, 1-8-0, 6-2-4, which is a contract with the Lake Agency, 1-8-0, 6-2-5, which is a budget amendment for public safety, and 1-8-0, 6-2-6, which is a budget amendment for General Fund Police.
Okay, is there any add-ons, Steve? Anybody got any add-ons? Come forth. Yeah, after the motion, I don't want him to finish his motion till I check to see if there's any add-ons. What you prefer?
Not a second.
Then do the add-ons. Okay, is there a second for the motion? I've been bossed around.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second that we move those resolutions to council, and that was 1-8-0, um, 6-1-8 on our agenda, all the way to 1-8-0, 6-2-6, and, um, I wasn't bossed around, I was politely asked. So, is there any discussion on the motion, any separations, any add-ons?
I believe there were, I believe there were two add-ons.
Do we have them?
Yes.
If I could.
Ms. Brax?
Any add-ons that you have will go to the council agenda.
Okay.
I believe you have four altogether that's being worked on, so they will be added when you come to the council.
I like to see you're here, Ms. Galloway?
They're not quite ready yet.
Okay, they're not quite ready?
No.
How can they not be? They'll come. So, so can we at least get the gist of them? If they're not ready?
Go ahead, Mr. Brax.
Do you have them coming?
Yeah, give us the gist.
Well, there are two.
Can you speak into the microphone, Ms. Attorney Kirchner?
There's gonna be AA com, how much you want? Uh, there's a resolution.
Hold on. Let's see what you're doing there.
Check, check.
All right.
There's a resolution to approve a one-time payment for additional services under the Consulting Services Agreement between the City of Flint and the Flint and Genesee Chamber of Commerce.
Say that again.
Resolution to approve a one-time payment for additional services under the Consulting Services Agreement between the City of Flint and Flint and Genesee Chamber of Commerce.
How much?
It's 10,000.
The amount of 10,000.
For consulting services of what type? I'm getting my cue. Ms. Galloway, go ahead, ask your question.
Yeah, if, if, if the Chair doesn't mind through you, um, even though we don't have it, I think it's appropriate for us to discuss it, so that by the time we do get it, we understand what we will be approving in an effort to save committee work to be done here and not on council. And so, um, I would like to know what that additional 10,000 is for? It says one-time payment, and, but what is it for? And why is it an add-on?
Mr. Brax might be able to elaborate somewhat on that.
Okay, the additional funding for the, um, Chamber of Commerce was to, uh, provide services to the City of Flint for grant writing for JP Chase, Advancing Cities Grant, and revisions and completion of the content to the City Economic Development Plan. So we asked the Genesee Chamber to help us with those two items.
Mr. President, through you to Mr. Brax. You said to do grant writing?
To do a one-time grant application to JP Chase Morgan for an Advancing Cities Grant.
And I just, it, it seems like when we were, um, talking about a grant writer for the Police Department, we were told that the city already had a grant writer on staff or that we were already paying, so, um, one.
No, we were saying that we were going to get a grant writer, but this grant came up and we needed to get it in, and we asked the Chamber of Commerce to help us get this grant in. This grant is to be used to help renovate business facades. We don't know if we're gonna get the grant, but if it does, it'll help us renovate some of these older business, uh, exteriors, so they'll make them more attractive.
And so, does $10,000 seem reasonable for a one-time grant application?
It's more than the grant application. It was a grant application also, uh, we have some content that we wanted to have developed for our City, Cities Economic Development Plan, so the Chamber helped provide that for us.
So, if that came through, wouldn't, would that not fall under a different grant? I mean, you said to help.
No, we are using, utilizing funds from the Kellogg Economic Development Grant to pay for these services through the Chamber.
So, the $10,000 is for that? I just, you know what, I, I can't speak for my colleagues, but it, it, I am remembering that the reason why we could not allocate money for a police grant writer was because we already had a grant writer that was already being paid, and so that money would be a waste of money for something we already had, and so, um, I, I want to do a referral that we can, um, check the records on that, Janelle?
Where is this $10,000 coming from?
The Kellogg.
It's coming out of the Kellogg Grant Funds.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Garrett and Mr. Griggs?
No, I was just gonna ask the question, 'cause I had talked to Angela earlier, I had assumed it was grant money that was going to the Chamber of Commerce so they can look for more grant money for the city for economic development? That's just to clarify, that's exactly what it is?
Yeah, and, and, and we, uh, just to, just to make sure we clarify, what we're doing here in lieu of, we're still working on hiring a grant writer, but what we're saying is we're, we're outsourcing grant writing capacity, if you will, in order to, um, make sure that we get this particular grant. That's what this is about. So, the Kellogg Grant was, it was always the plan for the Kellogg Grant to support grant writing capacity, so this is in line with the plan that we have talked about. It's just the fact that because we still don't have a permanent grant writer yet, that we're utilizing the services of, of, um, of, uh, the Chamber of Commerce in order to bring that capability here for this one-time service.
Okay, just final thing, Mr. Chair?
You done, Mr. Garrett? Um, Ms. Galloway then, Mr. Griggs?
Thank you. I just wanna say for the record, um, we worked on, um, grant proposals before June 30th, and, um, I'm just gonna say for myself that I'm disappointed that the Police Department really felt as though they needed a, a grant writer to help them with their needs, and that here we are in December, and I'm gonna go for myself, under the impression that we had a grant writer, and here we are six months later, and we still don't have a grant writer. And so, I, I'm just expressing my disappointment, and, and I wanna thank Mr. Guerra, because even the way you guys are explaining it, when I hear a one-time grant, that there's some other things in this grant that we're trying to secure, and then I hear someone else kinda, um, I don't know, in, in the court of law, they probably would say leading the witness. Um, I, I'm just saying I asked a very straightforward question, and it, and it didn't come across that way.
And you got a very straightforward answer as well.
No offense, Steve, I'm just saying for myself, the Police Department wanted a grant writer that was a full-time position that was $45,000 for a year, and we're getting ready to pay, and I'm not saying that it's not a value, we're getting ready to pay $10,000 for what starts off as a one-time grant application with some other duties, and I look forward to the paperwork so that instead of having this dialogue, I can read before me what it actually says.
Mr. Griggs?
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. One is, uh, I'm not real straight if this grant is for renovations or economic development.
The grant that they're looking for, for JP Morgan Chase Bank is a grant to help local businesses fix the facades of their building, to make them more user-friendly, look better to the community. So we're going to Chase, Chase Bank and asking them for a grant to do that, to help our local businesses out.
How much was the grant? How much money are we gonna request in the grant?
I believe it was upwards of a million dollars that's in the grant.
Okay, thank you.
So 10,000 might, might get a million, Ms., um...
I have a clarification, it was three mil, it was three million in that grant.
Three million, so 10 might get, three might get, one might get 500,000, that's the goal. Ms., um, Worthing?
I'm confused now. This isn't, this is economic development, it's not about the police.
This is about economic development.
Okay, why did we bring up the police? They asked for grant writing. Oh, okay, but this is under the Kellogg Foundation.
This is under the Kellogg Foundation.
So it's separate funds.
Where we had funding in the grant for grant writing capacity.
For economic development.
For economic development.
So, why don't we have a grant writer for the police? I know, maybe, where's Huey?
We're working on getting a grant writer.
Well, let's, let's, let's stick with the thing, we'll get to the police after this, you know?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, right after we settle this, we'll get to the police.
This is a good thing, uh, it's not our money, it's Kellogg's, uh, which is good, and, uh, and, and we need it, so.
So, Ms. Worthing, do anybody in here know the answer, Ms. Worthing, look for it? Do we have a grant writer in the Police Department? Do anybody know? Okay, they say we don't have one, Ms. Worthing, so we'll circle back on that issue. Who is it that wanted to say something? Is this Mr. Davis, Councilman Davis? Go ahead, because you got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Steve, I got a question now on the facade. It's to help, uh, businesses that's struggling to keep up the outside of their business, if I'm hearing right. Um, if we could attain that grant, would it be a lot of hard qualification through economic development for the, the business to qualify for the facade help?
There will be some qualifications, but until that grant is actually, you know, awarded to the City of Flint, we don't have those details yet. But there will be some, some qualifying things, mainly they gotta be in good standings with the city, as, you know, they can't have any outstanding bills, the normal stuff.
But it's not a location type, you know?
No.
It's all over the city.
We're gonna try to do, try to do various corridors in the city, north, east, south, and west.
Very good, thank you.
And I would just say, Mr. Brax, you know, as a council person, I don't make but 19,000 a year, and everybody sitting on the side of me make 19,000, and we got a couple businessmen up here, so we don't wanna vote on nothing that would limit council people from getting their facade redone as well. So we ain't heard nothing that limits, um, businessmen in the city who might or might not be a council person getting their facade redid ever.
Is that a question?
I don't think I'm gonna vote for it if it's gonna limit council people from qualifying for business, 'cause we have to have other jobs and own businesses, 'cause we the lowest paid, one of the lowest paid in the city also. We ain't heard council people can't participate in economic development, have we?
We have not heard that.
I haven't heard it neither. Okay, any more discussion? Mr. Griggs?
I don't know who this question is too, but don't we have an Economic Development Department?
Yes, we do have an Economic Development.
Who's, who's in charge of that?
Mr. Miller has been running point, I just seen him walking out the door with a businessman, they getting close to maybe trying to put something together. Mr. Brax, have I give him any wrong information? Who heads up Flint's Economic Development Department?
That is correct, it's, um, Mr. Rodrick Miller.
Rodrick Miller.
I thought Mr. Gilchrist was.
No, Mr. Gilchrist is a chief advisor, and, um, he's also getting paid under the Economic Development Grant from the Kellogg Foundation, the same as Mr. Miller. The Kellogg Foundation told the City of Flint to hire people and create capacity to do economic development. The mayor picked Mr. Gilchrist for one of those appointments.
Okay, and is there any more questions on the consulting? And the second walk-on that I have is...
Well, let's, 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 let's see if there's any more questions, and everybody cleared up. I'm not gonna let you chair this meeting, 'cause I wanna be the city administrator, and you won't let me, so. Is there any more questions on that first add-on? You exactly right, Mr. Brax, you a hundred percent right, seeing no more questions, go to your second add-on.
And the, uh, second add-on was, uh, for settlement of the case Charles Vianta versus City of Flint, you know, it was a workers' compensation case that I believe we reviewed in a, uh, executive session a few weeks back.
How much is it for?
$15,000.
$15,000. Anybody need executive session, we good, we can discuss it now, it's before us, outside in the open. So this is a settlement, a legal settlement for 15,000, that's the second add-on. Is it a third or fourth add-on? Here comes Ms. Wheeler, the City Attorney, you see Attorney Kirchner, Ms. Wheeler is in the room. Attorney Wheeler, the chief legal officer for the City of Flint. Y'all still, y'all need more time?
Well, the city administration only had two add-ons, and I was told that the clerk had two more.
Is it two more, or that's it?
So it's just two.
Okay.
We only have two.
We only have two.
They'll be, be put on the actual agenda, but we don't have enough.
So, hold tight. Okay, we got a motion on the floor, it's been moved and properly second, is there no separations to these, um, resolutions? That's, the motion is to move them to council. I looked at them last night, uh, thanks to Ms. Winfrey Carter, emailed me these agendas. The North Star, that's part of the 30 million dollars, the 20 Tahos, um...
That's what I was checking.
Let me see, is that a captain or, uh, to me, he like a double-duty deputy chief, but Captain Bernie, let me ask you a question, if you know.
Yes, sir.
Now, we, we added these into the budget, if I'm not mistaken, so I'm excited, I'm gonna vote for you to get these 20 new Tahos. I'm looking at the timeframe, it'll be somewhere in 2019 when they arrive. Are you and the Police Department ready for these vehicles?
Affirmative, and they're not all coming at once, they're gonna be spread out over a five-year period. The first year will be delivery of 15, and then from there, we'll get 10 a year from the remaining years, and, uh, that way, we, uh, have concurrence on this through the yards, through, uh, the fleet manager. That way, we have a staggered system of vehicles, so we get a few at a time, instead of waiting till we run them all ragged and then trying to buy them all at once.
All right, well, I'm excited if y'all excited. Um, Mr. Griggs, see that guy just walked in? That's Mr. Miller, that's the head of the Department of Economic Development for the City of Flint. Ms. Galloway?
Yes, um, I, um, Huey and I were going back and forth through you to, um, Mr. Newsom.
Okay, thanks, um, Captain Bernie. Mr. Newsom?
Mr. Newsom, you, um, responded that we had approved the, um, leasing for four tandem trucks? And, but then I, I, um, I asked about these specifically. When, I, I guess I didn't know that we were leasing, I don't know if I missed it, and so that's why I was trying to ask, when did we specifically discuss this, these?
No, the, this, these 20, this is the first time this has come in front of you, so maybe I misunderstood your question, so I'm glad you brought it to the floor. We had, we had, um, bought four, for, for the leasing of four tandem trucks back in April, so that was, you know, obviously a different lease for a different department. This is, this is the first time that we're bringing this before you, the leasing for these vehicles. Now, Councilman Mays alluded to the fact that we did budget for these in the police fleet when we adopted the budget, but now we're actually procuring them through, through a vehicle, through a lease, uh, mechanism.
And the reason why I was asking is, it's, it's, and you can forgive me if I'm not remembering something correctly, but it seems like we bought some Suburbans at $35,000 a vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I guess my question is, I'm trying to understand, is the 20 that we're getting now, that is not to exceed 260,000?
Right.
Is that covering the full term of the lease?
Just the first year.
For these 20 vehicles?
Just the first year, that's it.
Okay, and so, it says for a total lease purchase price of $1 million.
Right, so we'll, what we'll do is budget, we'll do it year over year over year.
No question, but my question is, why wouldn't we, if we could purchase the Suburbans at $35,000 or whatever the amount that has been negotiated through the state or however we bought the rest of them? If we bought 20 of those cruisers at that $35,000, I don't know if they all need to be the same level or anything, that's $700,000.
Yeah.
And I understand that the police life on a vehicle?
Right.
Is a certain way, but it seems like they have the ability to go through other municipalities that might find them more valuable and, and might be able to do it, and so I guess my question is, why would we do that instead of leasing the vehicles?
So the, so I think, obviously, it's a cash flow question, you have less cash if you're gonna lease a vehicle for that life, and what we're trying to do, one of the strategies, Mike and I, Mike Ruhl and I was Director of the Fleet, um, for all the city, not just for police, one thing we're trying to do is look at a lease versus buy strategy, and one of the reasons we're looking at is because what we tend to do, as opposed to having a lease and getting some of the savage value back, leveraging a large organization that can go sell the vehicle after the lease, and we get some of that residual value back, or we keep the vehicle, and you know what usually happens? We keep it for five years, we can't afford, we can't budget to keep the vehicle, to sell the vehicle and buy a brand-new one, so we keep it the sixth year, the seventh year, the eighth year, and then you get into these traps where you got old outdated vehicles because you couldn't budget the acquisition, the full acquisition of a new one. So one thing we're looking at now is a lease strategy, as, as opposed to a buy strategy, where we take the vehicles, we work with the lease, the lessor, and, um, make sure we reap some of that savage value, and usually, they can sell in the aftermarket better than what we can.
Right, so, so where are those contracts? Like, I'm a leaser, that's what I do, I lease because I want bumper-to-bumper, I wanna drop my car off to you.
Yep.
But I also know that in an effort to get that done, you've set some boundaries for me.
Right.
You said, Monica, you've paid for 12,000 miles a year. If you go over that at the end of your lease and there's no lease pull ahead, you better start calculating.
So...
And so my question, and the reason why I say that is because I'm trying to understand how leasing is beneficial for the Police Department, who sometimes put a lot of miles on their car, and we know that that inventory out there is old.
Well, that's, that's the, you just, your last sentence is primarily the problem, and I'm, and you, most of your lessors are not gonna give you a typical 12,000 mile full maintenance type of, of, of a, of a contract with police vehicles because of the wear and tear and the, the high usage of those vehicles. I'm happy to share some of the terms of the lease, I don't know if they're in your package or not, but I'm happy to share some of the outlines or the terms of the lease, um, that we have, that we have for this particular lease, if, if you would want to get that.
Well, I'm glad I looked at this, because I would've never thought that we were paying this for some 2006 and 2010 models, so, um, I don't know if the, I'm just saying, well, and I'm gonna just read to you what it says.
Go ahead.
Yeah, because these is 2000, these new vehicles.
It says, "The fleet department is requesting a purchase order with Michigan deal vendor Burger Chevrolet to replace 20 patrol vehicles."
Right.
12 2006 models?
Yes.
And eight 2010 models.
Okay.
All with high mileage and in poor condition.
So, so going back to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's going back to my original point. We have bought vehicles, and for, you know, different leadership is saying, well, we, let's stretch these vehicles out, those are vehicles that are being replaced.
Okay.
I don't have in front of me, but that, those are the vehicles that are being replaced.
Oh, they are, okay, thank you.
That just show, that just, that just accentuates my point.
Okay.
That the Tim Tate, if you, if you have a lease program and you're managing your vehicle fleet versus letting the vehicles just sit there and finance directors come and say, we're not gonna, you know, that sort of thing.
And Mr. Newsom, you don't, you, I, I understand that. What I wanna see is the terms of the lease.
Okay.
I wanna see, and the reason why is because as you're educating yourself, you're educating me, this may not be the first time that vehicles come before me, but if you take me along on your learning journey?
I understand.
I will be able to better prepare to not ask... I will be able to better prepare to not ask these questions and to understand what our police officers need when they're looking whether to lease or to buy.
Understood.
So all I'm asking is that you would bring me along in that.
Absolutely. I strongly agree with that. I'm happy to do so.
Mr. Garrett?
Yeah, I just wanna say that definitely some of those Cruisers out there, they knew need to be replaced. If you ever rode a police cruiser when they gotta go, and especially on the roads that we have here, it is not light. My question was, not necessarily, I guess it kinda relates. Where are we on the progress with the, the Cruisers that we accepted from, was it Texas? I don't know, Captain, if you can help me with that? We accepted some Ford, some Ford Cruisers that were donated.
You're talking about the 40?
It was a while back ago.
Yeah, this was probably about 10, 12 months ago. We, yeah, just, I think what you're talking about.
There must've been Crown Victorias, wouldn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, about a 12, about a year ago, we accepted a grant to potentially bring in 40 new Cruisers.
Right.
From Texas. And I, my understanding is that that has fallen through. Unfortunately, Deputy Chief is not here tonight, couldn't be here tonight. I don't know, Mr..
I'm glad it fell through. I didn't wanna see no Crown because I'm a GM man. I like Chevrolet's and Buicks and Pontiacs. Go ahead, Mr., uh, Captain Bernie.
My understanding on that whole Texas deal is it may or may not still be pending. Usually, if it sounds too good to be true, it is with me. We've gotten to the point where most of our Cruisers are reaching 200,000 miles, and some of them, in my opinion, are becoming unsafe. So that's why we decided to pull the trigger with this leasing program and instead of continue to wait for the miracle 40.
You know who is the, who hold our money tight? Look at him right there. We, so keep us posted on them police needs.
Well, if we, if we get those 40, then all the better, but we, we can't wait. We're getting right down to zero hour with the Cruisers we're putting on the road daily.
Don't hesitate to come to this committee, Mr. Garrett.
And Captain, if you could tell us, what is the average retirement mileage for most Cruisers?
That most.
Cause I know we're way above that, I assume.
We are. The, the police departments tend to retire them way prior to 100,000. It's rare to see a police department, because of liability, go over 100,000. We're, we're getting up there near 200,000 with most of ours now. We have a select few, the black and colored Cruisers, if you see them. I don't know if we have five or six of those. Those are newer models, and I don't know why they're separate from the other ones, but our last large batch, they're all right up there, and they need to be replaced badly. And so, to answer your question, I couldn't tell you the specifics of this, the mystery Texas 40 Cruisers, but I think we just got to the point where we're done holding our breath because it's getting to be a safety concern.
Without a doubt. Thank you.
Okay. Hopefully, I'm finna call for the vote on the motion. You see, I'm trying to speed it up. Any further discussion? If hearing none, this is a motion to move these resolutions to council. And that's all the resolutions on this agenda, which starts at 1-806-18, and goes all the way to page 4, 1-806-26. Mr. Garrett, and read the motion into the record. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's eight resolutions. That's what I count. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor to send these to council, signify by saying aye and/or raise your hand?
Aye.
All opposed? I would count that vote as seven to zero to move all of those resolutions to council. Those two add-ons. Mr. Branch, can y'all approach and give copies to our staff and secretaries of those two Davina, have them? Okay, have, so let's call them add-on number one and add-on number two. I'd like to entertain a motion. Mr. Branch, can you come holler at me right quick? Let me see what you got, so I can, here come Davina. You got them?
Nope.
She got them? Okay. Let's call add-on number one. Add-on number one would be the Charles, let's see, the consulting agreement. I'm gonna go with this consultant agreement as add-on number one. We discussed the consultant agreement, but you want that to be number two? So this is number one. Let's go with that one first. Okay, look, she passing out what we gonna call add-on number one, a resolution to approve the settlement of Charles Yanta versus City of Flint workers' compensation. Now, the other add-on, we gonna designate it as add-on number two. Add-on number two would be a resolution to approve a one-time payment for additional services under the consulting services agreement between the City of Flint and Flint and Genesee Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to entertain a motion to move add-on number one and add-on number two to council.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we move add-on number one and add-on number two to council.
It's been moved and properly seconded? I mean, no, it's been moved. Is there a second, Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, I second.
So it's been moved and properly seconded to add, to move add-on number one, a resolution to approve the Charles Yanta versus City of Flint workers' compensation case number, I guess that's W. 15003230, to council, and it's also been moved and properly seconded to move add-on number two, a resolution to approve a one-time payment for additional services under the consulting services agreement between the City of Flint and Flint and Genesee Chamber of Commerce. Is there any discussion or further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of moving add-on number one and number two to council, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That motion would carry seven to zero. Now, any new business? Now, we postponed the discussion items. We did not postpone new business. I always like to give an opportunity. All our meetings is open to the public. Any public got any new business, we need to hear about. If not, we done met the rules of the open meeting. Keep on thinking if you got something and you wanna tell us before we adjourn. I'm gonna say this under new business, while the public think, and if they decide they wanna have nerve and talk to this council, you can come to the mic. But let me say this. Under new business, y'all been getting them letters from the Attorney General's office regarding the subpoenas and witnesses. Anybody who didn't get those communications, if you got those communications, where Ms. Wheeler go? Ms. Wheeler, I'm asking your office to, can you approach, I'm asking your office to file a motion to enforce those subpoenas. We issued subpoenas to Amy Eppke three, four times, all kind of different ways because of what they was talking about, Judge Yule signing them, the city attorney signing them, so they done had them signed all kind of ways, and hopefully, they telling us they won't show up. We issued one to Rich Barrett. Rich Barrett used to live in City Hall, and Mr. Winfrey asked me about Rich Barrett as it relates to the $750,000 that we arguing about now, Mr. Newsom, as it relates to the 30-year deal and how that money could be used. And then the third subpoena went to Governor Rick Snyder himself. I wanted to get Rick, Governor Snyder served before the first of the year, and he sent, they sending through the Attorney General's office that they don't think state employees can be subpoenaed. So we gonna find out through the circuit court. Ms. Wheeler, do your office have a problem filing the necessary paperwork and motions to see if we can enforce any or all of those subpoenas?
No, we don't have a problem doing that, and in addition, I, I think this, like I said, they keep reiterating through Attorney Nate Gamble that their employees are not city employees. That is not a requirement under the, or, the charter to be a city employee. It's about the work that's before this, before this council and one of the committees, so we can work on that. Now, there was an indication from Mr. Gamble that he had reached out to say he wanted to schedule a meeting to discuss their presence with you and him on the phone. Now, I, I know that you and I had talked about it, but like I said, as far as what he's saying in there and, and reaching out to, to me to, to have a conversation, like I said, I don't, I don't know to what extent he's doing that, other than making a paper trail for the state, but I'd be glad to schedule a, a meeting and reach out to Mr. Gamble if you would like to do that on behalf of the council, so that we can discuss their presence and any, any, anything else. So we, we can do that per one of the, the requests or discussions in one of the letters that was sent by Assistant Attorney General Nathan Gamble.
Let me say this to the city council. You guys know, if you don't know, I'm a stickler for not more than two council people. So if Mr., what's his name, Gamble? If that attorney for the Attorney General's office wanna facilitate a conversation, as he kinda indicates, with me and Ms. Wheeler, because he indicated to me that if council people call to talk to him based upon the letters that they get, we recommend against that. He don't wanna talk unless we go through our attorney. In this case, it would be our city attorney, Ms. Wheeler's office. I have had no problem working with the city attorney. So if any council person, if Mr. Winfrey ain't available, if a second council person want to be in on these discussions, I can take one at any time. Usually, I'll deal with Ms. Brown, the city attorney, and another council member, just so you know, this ain't a closed thing. But I'm telling Mr. Attorney General, Amy Eppke and all of them, we work as a group based upon law. It'd have to be a group, five of us. So if you wanna talk to us, come talk to us in public. I seen Governor Snyder go all the way to Washington. I seen Governor Snyder and them whole press conferences in these very chambers, but now, they don't wanna come talk to us about $559 million flowing from Lansing to Flint. And what's important, Mr. Newsom, from what I read in the newspaper, you got $4 million that seem like we deserve for reimbursement. They in the newspaper, if the newspaper is accurate, saying we'll give you a million, but $3 million we gonna hold hostage until you agree to use a hydro vac. Two separate issues. So I don't wanna lead this committee to buy into that nonsense. If you owe us for reimbursement and it's $3 million, don't put it contingent upon what we do in Phase Six with a hydro vac. Release that $3 million. So I wanna ask Amy Eppke, and I said to Ms. Brown, Ms. Wheeler, they keep talking about, we'll answer questions in writing. Well, we can't swear no writing question in, and we can't cross-examine a writing question, or whether you call it cross-examination, one answer leads to another, and our time is valuable. Send somebody down here. So if, I said to Ms. Brown, we might preference a letter to this guy, Angela, Ms. Brown, and talk to you. It might say, "In light of your letters and your refusal to follow the subpoena of some sort, we sending a letter to Amy Eppke or the MDQ. Give us a list of everybody who making these decisions." Because to me, if I'm reading the newspaper, right, and you tell me, Mr. Newsom, I'm not gonna sit here for this and represent the city and let people hold $3 million hostage for one, you say it's $5 million now. Last I read, it was $3 million, talking about use a hydro vac. Come talk to Councilman Mays and this finance committee. And so, that's what we gonna do. We gonna subpoena till the cows come home. Now, hopefully, when the first of the year hit, maybe the new Attorney General won't have the same position, but we'll see. So we'll continue this investigative hearing, and so under new business, if there's no questions about the investigative hearing or any other new business, Mr. Griggs?
I've got a question for Ms. Wheeler.
Ms. Wheeler?
Are you saying that the city officially disagrees with the Attorney General's position?
Many times, on many different issues, do we disagree with the Attorney General.
I can't hear you.
Yes, on many different issues, we disagree with the Attorney General's office.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hopefully, so, Ms. Wheeler, as soon as y'all get a motion date to try to see if we can enforce these subpoenas, let all the council people know I might sit in and over there. You might have to put Mr. Garrett on oath or something. We don't know where, who, why this gonna go, but we appreciate you moving forward, and I want to reiterate that we do, we think we done played patty cake with them enough. Let's see if we can enforce these subpoenas, and then we will know as a council whether we can subpoena state elected officials and/or staff. We should be able to call staff in. And once we find out that answer, Mr. Garrett, I'm gonna try to get the appropriation chair of the House and the Senate here. Any more discussion, finance committee meeting? If there's no discussion on finance committee meeting, do I look like Santa Claus? If I do or don't, I'm gonna still wish y'all a Merry Christmas before I adjourn this last finance committee meeting of the winter of 2018. So get ready to buckle down and let's do good financial work in 2019. Public, is y'all happy? Y'all need to talk anything about finances before I shut down?
Good evening, Mr. President.
I'm a finance chair. Good evening.
Okay, finance chair, you stated the new business on economics. You know, last week, we the people stated that, that the Vatican oughta get ready because Lansing refused to give Flint any more money. And I, and you notice they already, even already got started with the, with my taking the, one of the words out of the prayer, talking about leaning slightly into temptation. But now it's to President Trump. He got three days to do what he said he gonna do with the economic situation, but we of Matt Foundation, we asking him not to build a wall, send the peoples over to Mr. Mike, cause we ain't got no problem with money. Cause Mr. Mike, you saw for yourself, one of the professors in here refused to ask for help. So that's the new economic business to you, financial president.
Well, thank you. If there's nobody else in our open meetings, under the Open Meetings Act, have anything to say, I would then entertain a motion to adjourn Mr. Mitchell. See that man sitting there, Mr. Miller? That's our new economic development director in the City of Flint. Mr. Griggs, you seen, and Ms. Worthing. Finally, the question on the grant writer for the police department, you got the answer? It look like Captain Bernie say we don't.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would wanna know why.
Okay, you wanna make a referral?
Yes, please.
Okay, I would order somebody from the police department to come to the next finance committee meeting to discuss it, unless Mr. Branch wants to do that now.
I just, just wanna make a clarification. Grant writer that we're seeking will not only be for the police department, it will be for overall for the City of Flint, so they will handle grants for police, fire, or anybody else that wants to write a grant.
Police is important, so Ms. Worthing, I would order that we put the discussion requested by, can I put your name on it? I'll put Ms. Worthing's name on it. I want it as a special order in the next finance committee meeting, a discussion about grants and money for the police department. It's about time to circle back on that, because policing is a high priority when you dial 911, and I, and we better try to fix that. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Griggs has moved to adjourn the Finance Committee meeting. It's been seconded by Mr. Gera. And so, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And that meeting is adjourned seven to zero. So, then, we would go now into what committee?
Do I have to sit up there?
It would be Legis, it would be who? Legislative, wouldn't it?
Can I just do it from here?
You can take this seat if you like, because I'm taking mine.
No, I guess I'll go on.
It feels good to sit up here. I like sitting up here. I want this seat.
Not yet. Thank you. I'd like to call the Legislative Committee meeting to order. I'd like to entertain a motion to postpone everything except for the ordinances. Mr. Gera?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion to postpone. Oh, and, sorry, we need to add that new business remain. Can we modify that?
I would, um...
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. So, there's a motion to postpone everything but the ordinances and new business. And it's seconded by Mr. Griggs. Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Man, this mic is, this mic is as sensitive as Michael Jackson then would. But this is what I want to get at. The first of the year, Ms. Worthing, you see how you got that special order about medical marijuana ordinances? I would ask that we start discussing the recreational marijuana. And so, when the first of the year come in Legislative, I want to start getting a feel of where this council is on recreational marijuana. It's gonna take them a long time to put them ordinance, I mean, them regulations in the plate, but I want to start discussing that. And I want the community and the council to know what it mean, whether we opt out or stay in. And so, I want to start that discussion. And so, I would ask that somewhere or another, we weave that in.
Actually, I don't know if I put that, did I just send an email recently about this? I don't remember ever putting this. Okay, that's why. Can we change it then to recreational? Because that's what we really need to get into right now. So, yeah, we'll just change the special order to recreational after the Christmas break. Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Galloway?
I hope that my colleagues will go on to the Michigan Municipal League. They did a, I can't remember what it was, the webinar today on recreational marijuana. And it was a very detailed, one-hour webinar that tried to share the difference between medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, but some of the challenges that come along with the recreational. And I hope that my colleagues will take the time to look at that, because there are some stipulations and/or, if you will, protection for a community more so under medicinal that is not there for recreational. And so, I would just implore my colleagues to, one, take this very serious, and, two, as much as you have your, you know, views of however you see it, I'm hoping that we look at the implications that this will have on this community in its current state, recognizing the difficulty with the fact that it is still not legal on the federal level, and you still can be arrested even by the state police or enforced on the federal level. And so, again, that was, and I'll tell you what the name of it was, but it was this morning, and it was, oh, I'm so sorry, you guys. I just took a bunch of screenshots, because there were so many things. And also, to the community, I'm gonna see if you have it, because it says even in here that in city and villages, if city and village councils do not act to opt out, citizens may petition to initiate ordinances to provide a number of those marijuana establishments. And so, I just hope that the community is not silenced. We represent your voice, and so, we just need to hear from you. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
Yeah, that voice is gonna stick you up. I knew it. I'm gonna say this, because I can tell when colleagues, I don't know until people vote, if they gonna vote yes or no, but I'm gonna put it on the record. Councilman Mays ain't voting opt out. The people voted for recreational marijuana. And the other week, we was here, I don't know who it was, somebody stood up at that mic talking about the charter, saying the people voted for the charter change, and it was in an August primary, and they read off the numbers of each ward. So, when people vote, it means something to me. If the people in the state of Michigan voted for recreational, if the people of Genesee County voted for recreational, and if I look, and the people of the city of Flint voted for recreational, Councilman Mays ain't gonna nullify their vote, Patrick. And now, I'm gonna tell you, for a politician, that's a hot issue, because even before they voted yes for recreational, people were scared to say they were gonna vote. Get what I said? I'm voting yes. Now, that don't make me the bad Santa Claus. Do I look like the bad Santa Claus pastor Gil, because I got dark glasses and a Santa Claus hat? Well, this is the position I take. And I take that position, because when I hear the Attorney General say they gonna look at letting people out of jail. Now, do you know, that's enough discriminalization for me? It's bad enough people smoking weed and can't get jobs, but to get a felony? I ain't down with that. I already got felonies. I don't want no more. Now, check this out. The position is this. So, it's gonna be a lot of different positions going back and forth. And what I'm hearing, if five out of nine council people in the city of Flint vote to opt out, that still mean folks can smoke on private property, I'm hearing. They can still move around with 2.5 ounces of weed, and they can have 10 ounces at home. The only thing that might restrict us to do, if we opt out, it might restrict us from setting up where they can buy it from. So, they'll go over to Cryo and other places and still come back into Flint. So, I think the train and left the station. And when train and left the station in California, Colorado, Michigan, and whatever, you got 30 states with medical marijuana and 10 with recreational, and then up north, you got a whole country. A whole country. Canada is legal. So, I think the train and left the station. It reminds me of prohibition with alcohol. And you know I don't want to talk about that, Patrick. So, my position is this. I want to pray, I want to go to heaven. People cannot smoke cigarettes, people cannot drink alcohol, but marijuana, the train and, it been left the station in the '60s and '70s. So, it's 2018. I look forward to this conversation with city council as it relates to the city of Flint. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Actually, I was gonna say that, I don't know if it's planning or legal, if we can just have what the city's choices are as ordinances on this, because there are concerns. Children are involved, all of those things. And I know there are laws for smoking. I think that's more on a state level. But if we have choices, I'd like to know that in the special order, what we, what our choices will be as far as regulating if we did opt, or did not opt out, I guess. All right. Any other discussion?
Um, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
I did see where you had recreational farther down as a discussion item.
Okay.
And then, on the special order was the medical. So, however y'all play with that.
No, the special order should be recreational. We should do that. So, we'll keep that that way. All right. All in favor of postponing everything except for the two ordinances and new business, signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. So, that leads us to ordinance 1-80523, Amendment Ordinance, Chapter 2, Article 6, Citywide Advisory Council. Any discussion? Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion that we postpone 1-80523.
Yes, thank you. Any, there's a motion to postpone. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Mr. Griggs. Any?
Till when?
Next committee meeting. We still have a question needed to be answered. Any discussion? All those in favor of postponing ordinance 1-80523, signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, so that passes. 1-80...
Madam Chair.
Mr. Gera.
Make a motion that we send 1-80628 to council, which is Amendment Ordinance, Chapter 46, and Utilities.
Okay, there's a motion. Mr. Davis?
Madam Chair, I'll second.
And it's been seconded. Any discussion on 1-80628?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
Through you to Mr. Benzick. What is this? Ain't that a good question? What is this? What is this? See, I don't get up here and talk all proper, and what is this? What is this?
Madam Chair, through you. So, Councilman Mays, a cross connection is defined as a, let me see here, I want to say this correctly, is a connection or arrangement of piping or appurtenances through which backflow of nonpotable water could flow into the public drinking water system. A very simple explanation of that is, if we had a depressurization of the system and a garden hose was connected, and it was in a, let's say, a bucket of chemicals, it could suck that back into the water system. Another example is, all fire suppression systems have to have a backflow prevention device. So, this is really the program that administers this. And the reason why we're bringing this to you is, it was cited as a deficiency from the Department of Environmental Quality. We have rectified the deficiency, but part of what they wanted us to do is to update our cross connection ordinance.
I get it. So, this gonna help mess and stuff from backing up into the water supply?
Yes, sir.
Sewage. Okay, thanks.
Well, not sewage.
Not sewage?
No. So, if you can imagine, like, a fire suppression system, the water sits in those pipes for a long time. We wouldn't want that water to end up in our drinking water system. So, that's why you have a backflow preventer that isolates that system from our distribution system.
So, it addresses, it says, water supply and sewage disposal system?
I believe that that's referring to the ordinance that it's under.
Okay.
It's under the water and sewer ordinances of the city of Flint.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of, this is to move it to council, moving 1-80628 to council, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. New business, Rob, don't move. Can you come back, please? Because I do, I have some. Thank you. For the, I guess there's a review panel or review board for contracts, is that correct? Like, when you look over contracts, there's a group of people that rate it and vote on it?
So, there's not, I guess it depends on what the, I think you're referring to when we bid something out? Is that what you're getting at?
No, like, when we accept bids from different companies, how we decide, like, what your recommendation to council will be.
So, it's dependent on, there's not always a board, if you will, or a group that, a panel that selects them. It's kind of dependent on what the bid is and what the service is. So, sometimes, we will do a award based solely on price. Other times, it's based on proposal and price. Sometimes, it's just based on proposal. Like, when we do M-dot work, we're not allowed under the M-dot purchasing requirements. We can't look at the price. We can only evaluate the proposal. Then, after we make the selection, then we can open only the one bid that's associated with that company. So, there's multiple different ways that we evaluate purchasing.
So, for AECom, was there a review panel or board?
There was a review panel.
Okay. Who was on that?
There were five people on that. There were myself, Derek Jones, Loyst Fletcher, his name's Ira, and I can't think of his last name. He used to be, I think, the president of the school board. I'm not sure what his last name, say again?
Rutherford says...
Yeah, and then Clarence, he's the president, I think, of Hamilton Healthcare.
I'm sorry.
His name's Clarence.
Clarence, who was the last one?
Pierce.
Pierce.
Yep.
Do you have, like, the rating system or the scores they gave for the companies other than AECom? So, when you guys decided to choose AECom and bring it before council, do you have the ratings that each person gave them or how you decided?
I don't have them. Those were turned into purchasing.
Okay.
So, at the time, it was Derek Jones. I assume that those records are still in existence here somewhere.
Okay.
Point of information.
Yes.
What are you looking for?
The ratings for the companies that, besides AECom. So, AECom and all the other companies that they were looking at for their recommendation for council, they chose AECom. I wanted to know what their ratings are, like, how they made that decision. So, I'm gonna make a referral then to purchasing for that information, if we can put that down, Janelle. I know I have the five that made that decision, but any records on how they made the decision, I'd like to see those, please. All right. Thank you. Any other new business?
Ms. Worthing.
Yes, Mr. Mays.
Now, you know, if Rob Benzick and purchasing don't give you that information, we in the middle of a hearing on some of that stuff, and you can get it. So, let me know whether or not you receive that, because I'm trying to get y'all to really pay attention to this investigative hearing on all of those parameters.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benzick. All right. If there's no other new business?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
I would move to adjourn Legislative Committee.
There's been a motion to adjourn. Mr. Griggs?
I'll second.
And it's been properly seconded. Okay, all in favor of adjournment, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And so, now, we are moving on to governmental ops. Legislative is now adjourned.
So, we got governmental ops, Grants Committee, they should go fast, and then regular council meeting, and then I'm off to the mayor's Christmas party. 501 grill, raspberries. Get ready, Patrick.
Like to call this governmental ops, meeting orders.
It's gonna be fast.
Like to entertain a motion to suspend or just do resolutions and new business.
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, you remind me of a president, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mays.
Yeah, I would like to move that we deal with the action items, the resolutions and new business and postpone all the other agenda.
In the executive order, I forgot that.
Huh?
There's an executive order too.
Oh, an executive session? I don't want that. Confidential memory, no, I don't want that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so my motion stands.
Yeah.
Because that's the confidential one on the mayor, yeah, my motion stand, I won't get in discussion, my motion stand.
Okay, just for, to be clear, just doing resolutions and new business. Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mays.
I'm finna make you the youngest president in the history of the City of Flint, I keep saying, Mr. President, let me say this, Mr. Chairman, that closed executive session on the mayoral appointees, I think we know what that is, that can wait till afterwards, I think Ms. Fields wanted it more than most, and she ain't here, so we can come back and circle back on that, so I'll be supporting the motion to do the resolutions and new business.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, the ayes have it, on to the first resolution.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Worthing.
I make a motion that we move 1-80590, yeah, 1-80590, and 1-80591 to Legislative Committee.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been properly seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I mean, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mays.
I'm gonna make you president before it's over. The anti-bullying policy and the harassment and discrimination policy in the workplace, is that what threw you to Ms. Worthing and the two that you moved?
Yes.
And you moving them to council for approval?
No, legislative, since they're policies.
Oh, you want to move to Legislative Committee?
Yes, yes.
I can support that. I wasn't ready to move them to council, but since they're policy and you are the Legislative Chair, I can support moving them to your committee, I can go for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Really, that's, I mean, he really, oh, sorry, me?
Ms. Worthing?
Really just basically described it, but since they're policies, well, first of all, I would have postponed them anyways, but, or asked to be postponed, but since they're policies, I'd like to have a really healthy discussion on this later in legislative, and that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Winfrey Carter?
Oh, okay, I just wanted to know the reason as to why she wanted to move it to Legislative, but I got it.
Okay, any other discussion?
We can certainly discuss.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know they think this anti-bullying policy and harassment and discrimination policy gonna get me the bad Santa Claus, but I think I'm the one that's being bullied on the council, don't y'all think I'd be bullied, I'm gonna start crying in a minute, but, so I'm ready to work on it and talk about it, I don't think it's gonna get me, Pat, I don't think I'm gonna fall down under the bullying and that type of policy, but we'll see, who knows, maybe I'm badder than I thought I was, I'm ready to vote.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, the ayes have it. Now we're on to a resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mays.
If I can do this, this is approval at a disposition of acquired land bank properties, where is that policy, is that policy attached? Okay, it is attached, have y'all looked at that policy yet, council people? Okay, I'm gonna give y'all time to look at that policy that's attached, me and, I know Mr. Garra looked at it, I know Mr. Winfrey had a copy, but this is the policy, for ten, fifteen or more years, we have never kept a property going to the land bank, so I want the public to know, last year we looked at properties all across the city, we kept seven properties, this year we looked at properties and we kept eight properties, we have fifteen properties now, and some of them I want to go back to the people who was in them and lost them, it's like a second chance program, Pat, I'm picking on you because I know you, I, I'm getting old, I can't see everybody back there, I see Mr. King, but we taking properties, and according to state law, we can take all of them, any of them, and so we met with the Genesee County Treasurer's Office who foreclosed for delinquent taxes, we met with the land bank, and so we doing a pilot program, and so now if this works out, these are the policies and rules, I want council to look at them over the holidays, and then when we come back in January, if we adopt these policies, then we will start transferring this property back to folks. The vacant property, I want to team up with some of the kids from Job Corps and Youth Bill, and we'll go in and paint, and then we might give it to them or somebody else in the city, but we want to give property to folks as a government entity, I've talked with the mayor, and so look like we've got some buy-in on this. So I'm gonna say one thing to council, if I may, Mr. Garra, before I make this motion, when you look at these policy issues of right of first refusal, that's the legal language that we go in, Ms. Kurtzner, have you ever heard Attorney Kurtzner of the right of first refusal?
Yes, I have, Councilman.
So I'm studying the right of first refusal, council people study the right of first refusal, then look at A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, I'm gonna tell y'all off the top one of the ones I don't like, I don't like this one, Pat, if we transfer the property to them, they need to have a current water bill, I want their water own, but if they behind like me, I'm not wanting to stop them from getting that property, because we gonna catch it up, we gonna catch it up, we gonna catch it up, I ain't even got a current consumers' bill, they setting their shit off, I gotta pay three thirty before Christmas and catch it up, we get paid Thursday, what'd I get, five hundred and eighty dollars? I might make arrangements, it's Christmas, my son, him in town, I might want to pay a hundred and two thirty after Christmas, so I'll be calling consumers, but on this, look at that angle when they say current water bill, we might have to play with some of these, so in light of that, and in fairness to all of the colleagues, we've worked on this, we getting close, hopefully after the first of the year, we can transfer nine properties and have six left, those are the occupied, so I would move that we postpone, we postpone 1-80627, the City of Flint policy for disposition of acquired land bank properties until the next governmental operations committee meeting.
There's been a motion, is there a second? Mr. Davis?
Mr. Pr, Mr. Chair, I'll second.
It's been properly seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mays.
Home Street, not the one where my girlfriend, but the other Home Street, we got transparent and open, I kept one that had a May's name, I stained, I didn't vote on that one, but Home Street that I ain't, wasn't connected with, West Hopson, there's two of them on West Hopson, this the first ward, because the first ward, me and my block clubs, we talk about preserving our neighborhood, and then we got Bell Tree, but then Leslie Court, then we jump out to your ward is 1120, 1113 West Hamilton on the corner of Hamilton and Landale, and then we got two in your ward, that 906, which was rich, but that 500 one, five something east was a mistake, so if you get a chance to look at that 500 address, Mr. Garra, tell me, is it occupied empty, because it got on the list, but I know how that mistake happened, and so the prize is a big one, a nice one on Woolcock over by El Dorado Drive, Pat, if I was the sixth ward councilman, I'd leave my little house on Russell and be dead over there, living large on Woolcock, that's just a prize, and so we can look at residential and commercial, I want council to catch up, let's get ready to move these properties in a legal way, and I will be supporting postponing this in to January, thank you.
Any other discussion? I do have a question for either Ms. Wilcox or Steve, would this affect also the second chance church, this step, this policy if it goes into effect?
I believe this, I believe this will set up for residential properties.
Okay.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, when we bring the resolution for the six, seven, eight, or nine houses in that resolution, I'm gonna ask that the Old Jefferson School Second Chance Church that be transferred also to the church and or dairy church, we've had that one now for two years, I'm ready to clean our inventory out, Pat, and start picking some more for next year, so I'm asking that the, when we move on this resolution for the eight, nine houses, I'm asking that Jefferson School, the Second Chance Church be in there as well.
Yep.
Are you in favor of that, Mr. Garra?
I am, I am.
Good.
But we can make that motion next year.
All right, I'll be looking forward to it.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, no's, abstentions, on to, so, everybody voting aye, on to new business. Any new business? Hearing no new business, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mays.
I'm gonna make you president, hey, Mr. Chairman, I would say you got a very important committee, governmental operations, you, I don't know if you are as, I know you active because I see you everywhere, in Lansing, at the Sheriff's Department, everywhere, but you show speak quieter than I do, so you got one of the most important committees, I look forward to working with you on governmental ops in the upcoming year, and I would move to adjourn governmental ops.
There's been a motion, Mr. Griggs, second that motion. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? The ayes have it.
We got Grants Committee, and then council, and we out of here. Oh, we got ad hoc committee.
Well, I think we post.
Well, we'll see what we do. We doing all these committees and council meeting in one day.
Okay, I would like to bring the Grants Committee to order. First, I would like to entertain a motion to postpone the rest of the agenda items. We do not have any resolutions, all we have is old outstanding discussion items.
Yeah, Mr. Griggs.
Can I get that motion?
Show moves.
Mr. Griggs, can I get a second to the motion? Ms. Worthing? Okay, so it has been moved and properly seconded that we postpone all old outstanding discussion items.
What did you say?
It has been moved and property, properly seconded. Any discussion?
Well, I would say this, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Madam Chair, all our committees is important, grants we taking in millions of dollars, Ms. Wilcox, that's the council person I talk to on a regular day more than any of them, I'm financed, she grants keeper posted, I talk to her and you, and I'm sure we'll do grants very well in 2019, I'll be supporting the motion to postpone reluctantly, I might just vote no, to postpone, they got five votes, I might vote no, because I hate to break up a good meeting. Okay, we'll see.
Okay, all in favor of postponing all old outstanding discussion items, signify by saying aye or raising your hand? All opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? So we have, what, five one? Okay, next, do we have any new business? Ms. Wilcox, do you have any new business that you would like to share for the Grants Committee? I was thinking about, is there a meeting tonight as far as?
There is, our, thank you, our.
Microphone.
Hello, our action plan process has begun for the 2019-20 fiscal year, and so tonight there actually is a town hall meeting that occurred from 4:30 to 6:30 that was publicized, I shared the timeline with you before, there's a few other meetings, and I'll make sure that council is aware of it, there's a meeting on January 9th regarding, it's an application workshop, so to provide opportunities for the public who are interested in applying for CDBG funds or home or ESG to come and hear more specifics about the application process, that is January 9th, and then there's a public needs hearing, which I cannot recall right now the date, but it's on the timeline that I provided to you before, and that I just wanted to let everybody know that that process has started, share with your constituents, constituent organizations that applications are being accepted for five areas, and I'd encourage agencies, I'd encourage you all to get the word out and agencies to apply.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Through you to Ms. Wilcox, Ms. Wilcox, how are we doing on leftover monies as it relates to 10,000 for Hasselbrink Senior Center and Brennan Senior Center?
I believe we're close to finalizing a number, and you should see a resolution for reprogram funds in the first of next year.
So, understanding what you said, we can look for a possible resolution, the first part of next year for the 10,000 allocation for Hasselbrink and Brennan?
Correct.
Thank you.
May I add one more thing?
Yes.
I only want to add something because I should have requested this earlier, but I know that you moved the resolutions for the three, the three choice related resolutions to council, I did want to say that we do have our partners from those organizations here tonight, and so if there is, I know you didn't have discussion on these resolutions, but if there is going to be questions or discussions, they're here and have been here and are still here, available to answer those questions.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
When we get to council meeting, we'll, we'll bring them up if they would like to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's what I was gonna say, what you said, hopefully he'll stay and we can meet him and hear from him.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilcox. Any other new business? Any other new business? Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to, yes.
It's okay, I make a motion that we adjourn grants.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I second that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded that we adjourn the Grants Committee. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. All opposed?
Nay.
And any abstentions? Okay, Grants Committee is adjourned. Okay, Grants Committee is adjourned.